Good evening and welcome to the City of Palm Coast's City Virtual Council Meeting. It is June 2, 2020. Pursuant to the Governor's Executive Order suspending all Florida statutes that require a quorum to be present in person at local government public meetings or require a local government body to meet at a specific public place, the city may conduct meetings of its city council without having a quorum of its members present physically or at any specific location and utilizing communications media technology such as telephonic or videoconferencing as provided by Florida statutes. As Mayor, pursuant to the authority granted to me by the city charter, I declared a public emergency on March 15, 2020 in response to COVID-19. Furthermore, pursuant to the powers and the Governor's Executive Order, I suspended all city requirements that require a physical quorum to be present to conduct this meeting and authorize that this meeting be conducted by communications media technology under the city's State of Emergency Proclamation for virtual meetings executed on April 3, 2020. The city manager, pursuant to the authority granted by him, to him by the city's initial State of Emergency for COVID-19, has closed City Hall to the public. Therefore, no member of the public will be allowed into the community wing of City Hall during this meeting. Notice that this meeting was going to be held by communication media technology and not at a physical location was posted on the city's website at least five days ago. The notice provided that those members of the public meeting, reasonable accommodation to participate in the meeting, could contact the city clerk for assistance by noon on Monday, June 1, 2020. Access to this meeting is being provided via livestream on the city's website and by calling Should you need technical assistance, please call 386-986-2391. Today is June 20, 2020. It is 6:00 PM. Please rise and join me in the Pledge Allegiance to the Flag.
It's June 2.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry.
It's June 20. Sorry. June 2.
Okay. There you go. It's on the record now.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Holland.
Here.
Vice Mayor Clufus. There he is. Okay. Councilmember Cuff?
Here.
Councilmember Brancino?
Here.
Councilmember Howell?
Here.
Mayor Holland. Someone has their microphone. All members are present.
Okay, thank you for the roll call. We will first start with presentations. A presentation, Agenda Item Number One is COVID-19 Updates. Mr. Morton.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, City Council. We continue our reopening strategy and we continue to move in that, of course, strategically. We're working with purpose and we're working with consistency following the reopening strategy that the city has developed in partnership and consultation with our stakeholders, including the Flagler Health Department, the Centers for Disease Control, the Governor's Task Force for Reopening, and with our local county and other municipal stakeholders. So with that, we continue to move forward in the reopening strategy. And tonight with that and our COVID-19 update is Captain Tom Esconi from the Palm Coast Fire Department.
Thank you, Mayor, Council Tom Esconi. Fire Captain, just go over a few stats off the DOH website. In Flagler County, we have 190 confirmed cases. 166 of those are in the city. We've had 21 hospitalizations with still only four fatalities. I'm happy to say that all 76 living, adult living facilities and nursing homes in the county have been COVID tested and there have been zero residents that tested positive for COVID. As Mr. Morton said, we've had multiple meetings in the city developing our reopening plan and our strategies and everything is moving forward slowly and methodically, all in line in conjunction with the Governor's recommendations. And happy to announce that we're reopening the parks this Saturday, the 6th. So Ralph Carter Park and Indian Trail Sports Complex will be open. The playgrounds and water fountains will be open at Belterra Park, Indian Trail Sports Complex, Palm Coast Linear Park, Ralph Carter Park, Seminole Woods Neighborhood Park, and Waterfront Park. The recreational amenities are going to remain closed to the public, all basketball courts, all park pavilions, all volleyball courts, the James F. Holland Memorial Park Playground, the Palm Coast Aquatic Center, the Palm Coast Community Center. We are happy that we are going to move the community center into the summer camp starting June 15th. So the community center will be closed down to all residents so we can keep it available for the, for the kids and the youth activities. I would expect we're going to hear something very shortly from the Governor for a Phase Two announcement. We have consistently stayed in that downward trend for the positive COVID relation, in relationship to the testing that has been done statewide. Our hospital bed availability is still holding strong. So with those key factors that the Governor's office has been watching and monitoring, I would expect the Phase Two announcement, something very shortly in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Council, any questions or comments for either Captain Esconi in regards to COVID-19, Chief Forte, or City Manager Matt Morton?
Not this time.
Thank you for the update and thank you for your continual leadership.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll now move to Agenda Item Number Two, which is a presentation on the Communications Plan. Mr. Morton.
Thank you again, Honorable Mayor, City Council. Tonight, I'm very pleased to have our interim Communications Director Tyler Jarnig in here. Tyler has added the much-needed direction, purpose, and consistency to the communications efforts here at the City of Palm Coast. And under Tyler's leadership, we are now finally using best practices, salient information to engage and communicate with our residents and our community and our stakeholder, I think, in ways that we have not done before. And so tonight Tyler's here to discuss his strategic communications plan. He didn't rebuild off the old plan. He created a new framework and is building upon those strategies and tonight really wanted to share that with the council, with the community, and for discuss, get some discussion and feedback. So with that, I'd love Tyler if you could present.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
This is the 2020 City of Palm Coast Strategic Communications Plan. This is a PowerPoint version of a larger document. I won't hit on every single point of the document, but I would be happy to go through point by point at a later date. I'm going to share with you the highlights of it tonight. So our mission statement is ultimately to maintain quality, consistency, and transparency that strengthens the unity among our Palm Coast residents and the trust that they have in our local government. The five key goals that we have are to maintain open lines of communication between the City of Palm Coast and its people across a wide variety of platforms, promote city events, activities, and programs to better engage our citizens with the wide range of services our city provides, build trust between the people of Palm Coast and their city government, both through direct communication efforts and through media outlets by providing accurate, thorough, and truthful information in a timely manner, innovate using new and existing communications platforms that serve a diverse array of citizens, and five, implement and execute repeatable, appropriate communication strategies for each measurable goal. Our messaging principles are quality, consistency, and transparency, as I mentioned before. With that going forward, we've rebranded over the past couple of months. Beginning in March, we started using our new logos that you can see at the bottom there. These do not replace the city seal in any instance. They replace the Find Your Florida logo. We're also working to build and strengthen our relationships with the community stakeholders. We feel these personal connections are vitally important to humanize and personalize the city as well as the selected officials and staff. We're currently weighing different ways that we can interact with the community, different outreach events. We had a number of in-person events planned that we were working towards before the COVID-19 pandemic began. And now we are working to transition through virtual outreach events. We, for instance, have Be Local, By Local outreach events through Zoom coming up in the next month. Ultimately, this serves our goal of connecting our community. All city information should come to live on Palm Coast Connect as the central hub from which information is then shared to our social media and email accounts. Communication Division ultimately wants to work toward the goal of establishing one website as the single source from which all information disseminates. We know that the .gov domain is vital for branding purposes. It is ultimately impossible for us to receive verification, which is that blue check that you see on social media, as a legitimate municipality on social media without it. Our current system of palmcoast.gov and palmcoastconnect.com splits our audience and has the potential to create confusion about where our residents need to go for information. So going forward, Communications wants to work with IT to set a timeline to achieve the goal of assessing that potential for a singular website. We also have talked about departmental tiles on Palm Coast Connect. At the previous council meeting, I talked about Palm Coast City Updates and I talked about the potential for each department to have a webpage where they can maintain their story over the years. We realized that it did not make sense as we try to consolidate and break down, you know, these silos and break down and consolidate to a single source of information. It did not make sense to create a new website. So we said, okay, we can build this in Palm Coast Connect. So that's the ultimate goal. And clicking these tiles would take the residents to each department's landing page where they can learn about the incredible public projects and work being achieved by the City of Palm Coast, going back to what you said in the last council meeting about being able to share these important public projects like Holland Park with the community. And that focus is ultimately on multimedia storytelling. We want to visually show our residents the work that we're doing. For social media, this is a huge component, a huge tool for communications. It is not the hub that is Palm Coast Connect, but it is a tool to disseminate the information out to our community quickly. We know that Facebook, a lot of our residents get the information through Facebook and of course through our email, through constant contact. As of June 1, the city utilizes the handle Palm Coast Gov. for all of its communications on Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter. The Communications Division will be responsible for all city content from creation, scheduling, and advertising. We are working with all the departments to coordinate ideas and to generate content. We still use traditional media. We still use our newspapers, our digital media. We still print. We still have flyers, brochures, the newsletter. We are evaluating ways to be more effective and more cost-efficient in this new digital age going forward. This goes back to what I said earlier about having that one central hub. You can see it right here in front of you. Be Local, By Local, Mayor's 90/90 Challenge, the 2020 Photo Contest, all of it is living on Palm Coast Connect. We are trying to integrate everything into Palm Coast Connect. Be Local, By Local is now being shared. The 30 Restaurants in 30 Days has kicked off starting yesterday. We started with a local pizzeria and each day of the month, we are highlighting a different business and promoting it. This is completely free. This is to help our service industry be able to recover lost revenue from the COVID-19 pandemic. As we move forward over the coming months, we'll look to work with other businesses, but we felt it was really important for the first month to kick off with the service industry. We reached over 50,000 unique individuals through all of our platforms combined, and this has ultimately a huge effect to be able to drive business to these local restaurants. There's also an ongoing Be Local, By Local Photo Contest, which allows residents to submit photos of their favorite dishes from the local restaurants for a chance to win a $50 gift card to a restaurant of their choosing, of course, within the city limits of Palm Coast. And Communications selects this winner each month, similar to how we did the annual photo contest. The Mayor's 90/90 Challenge, in conjunction with Parks and Rec, has kicked back off. It started yesterday as well, and it will run through June 30th. Besides the Mayor's 90/90 Challenge, we're doing a smaller 30/30 for participants who had not yet taken part. They now have 30 days to get 30 miles and finish strong. Residents can also log in now on Palm Coast Connect and backlog the miles that they did between March and May when the Palm Coast Connect, Mayor's 90/90 Challenge was taken down because of the COVID-19 pandemic. And then our 2020 Photo Contest actually kicked off yesterday as well, so it's been a very busy month. And it will run from June 1 to July 31st. The six categories are business, technology, nature, dining, historic, and residence. Of course, all photos must be taken inside the city limits of Palm Coast and the photos must be submitted via palmcoastconnect.com. The winning prize for each category is $100 and the winners will be selected in August by city staff and then honored September 1 at the City Council Business Meeting. This kind of gives you some insight into how we do our marketing campaigns. This is something that was much needed and it ultimately guides how we market. Instead of throwing things into the wind, we have a written plan that guides us each month, each week even. And we are able to put down on paper all of our concepts and think through, you know, what are our goals and how can we measure what we're ultimately trying to achieve? You can see that for Be Local, By Local, for instance. And we have these for each specific campaign as well. Coordinating all the social media content, when you take into the fact that we are combining formerly the Parks and Rec pages and the fire pages along with us and then also trying to incorporate the other departments, of course, takes increased coordination. And so we're using a social media content calendar to basically slot out the different times of day for each week and have that scheduled out. You know, aim for one to two posts per day for communications, one to two posts per day for Parks and Fire, and we're going to develop a pipeline from various city departments for our social posts. We're also monitoring best practices from other standout cities that we've seen on social media. The general flow is that we're ultimately, by end of day Friday, going to have a social media content set, which I will then review and approve. So we will know by Friday end of day what is going to go out the next week, Monday through For emergency communications, we know that we can't plan, we can't have it set ahead of time, but we can plan ahead of time. So we're still going to be prepared for that as well. Wildfires, tornadoes, severe multi-car accidents, and other imminent hazards demand imminent communication to our residents. So we're working with our fire department and our fire PIO to develop and refine our emergency communication procedures for these specific scenarios. We know that communications should ultimately be as well-equipped as possible and maintain the latest PIO and FEMA training to be able to face these situations. In summary, every effort will be made to ensure that Palm Coast communication efforts maintain a citizen-centric focus. We will continue to reflect the diverse and inclusive nature of the city's people and the city's efforts to serve those people. Our technological advancements do not replace the value of human connection, they support it. By assessing our needs and focus areas through data analytics collected through our social media and CRM platforms, we are reshaping the meaning of government and finding better ways to serve our residents. Our mayor and city council work tirelessly to understand these needs and put in motion the projects that make Palm Coast what it is and what it will be. This strategic communications plan is a living document that will continue to be updated as its methods are assessed and analyzed throughout the year. And I do want to stress that this is just a brief PowerPoint of a larger document that goes into the finer details of what we're trying to do. I would be happy to go over that at any point so we can assess the strategies behind it, but this is our starting point for this fluid document going forward. That is all.
Tyler, I just want to say thank you for putting the time and effort and energy behind this document. I think it's headed in the right direction according to our council priorities as well. And it will identify a number of initiatives, including the different departments that we speak about with the street lighting program and our stormwater, you know, projects and plans. So the more we can communicate effectively with our residents, I think frankly, the residents will be better informed, have up-to-date, accurate information, and will be able to enjoy their everyday lives knowing that the city is being taken care of and their issues are being managed and handled. So I certainly appreciate that. I'm excited about the, the, the different components that you've taken into account, including our residents that still enjoy opening up the newsletter with, with the utility bill. It still takes into account people opening up an email and reading that email or, you know, downloading our app or just walking into City Hall, but having the ability to have access to that information at their disposal 24 hours a day, seven days a week on Facebook or the other social media platforms, including one place to get their information so they don't have to search in several different tabs, I think is, is really smart and very helpful to our residents. So thank you.
Thank you.
Council, any questions or comments for Tyler at this time?
Not at this point.
Okay. Thank you again. Okay. Okay, we will now move to public participation. So, public participation will work as follows. As in all council meetings, if you speak at the beginning of the meeting under public participation, you will not be allowed to speak under the second public participation. The second public participation is reserved for speakers who do not have the opportunity to speak at the beginning of the meeting. Prior to calling in with your comments, if you're watching the meeting from your website or through YouTube, please mute your device in order to, for there to be no interference. If you would like to participate in public comments, call 386-223-1690. You will need to hit star nine to raise your hand to provide your comments. You will be acknowledged by hearing a message that you have been unmuted. Please begin by stating your name clearly for the record. You will have three minutes to speak. When the 15 seconds left on your three minutes, you will hear a beep. At the end of your three minutes, you will hear another beep, and then you will be muted at that time. You will be not disconnected from the meeting. All callers have the opportunity to speak. Please be aware, there may be a short pause as we switch to the next caller. Now we will begin. Please state your name for the record and your three minutes will begin. Thank you, Doug. We will close public comment. I will move to Agenda Item Number Three, which is the approval of the minutes of the city council, May 19, 2020, business meeting.
I make the motion.
There a second. Moved and seconded. All those, uh, roll call, please, Virginia. Sorry.
Okay. Vice Mayor Clufus?
Yes.
Councilmember Brancino?
Yes.
Councilmember Cuff?
Yes.
Councilmember Howell?
Yes.
Mayor Holland?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. Agenda Item Number Four is a resolution approving a facility use agreement with Palm Coast Little League for use of the baseball softball fields at Holland Park and the Indian Trail Sports Complex.
Thank you again, Honorable Mayor, City Council. And tonight, we have Lauren Johnson here to provide a presentation and guide us through this proposal.
Good, good evening, Mayor and Council. I am here to present the partnership renewal between Palm Coast Little League and the City of Palm Coast.
Good evening.
So just a brief history of how far we've come with Palm Coast Little League. Palm Coast Little League started in 2001. They've encouraged play at both James F. Holland Memorial Park as well as Indian Trail Sports Complex. They are a founding member and ongoing participant of our Palm Coast Sports Alliance, and they recently celebrated their 20th anniversary on February 29 of this year. Palm Coast Little League has made improvements to the facilities at no cost to the city. They've gone out and raised sponsorships and received grants to build out their Palm Coast Little League clubhouse building, the concession stand at James F. Holland Memorial Park, and they've done various dugout repairs and replacements throughout Indian Trail Sports Complex in the past. The future looks bright with Palm Coast Little League and the City of Palm Coast. We are expanding to add four new fields. Two will be softball and two will be baseball at completion. We are renovating, we've just renovated the concession stand and the restrooms and press box, and we are continuing this partnership with our department, Palm Coast Parks and Recreation, and Palm Coast Little League. I want to thank Palm Coast Little League for their countless volunteer hours, their continuous community engagement, as well as the physical and mental development that they give our youth. I know, I invited Peter Scholms and Fred Lures to participate on this call. I'm not sure if they're on the line. Peter, Fred, are you there?
Looks like two are, unless they're...
I know that whenever I spoke to Peter this week, they are very excited about the good news for play starting back on this Saturday, and Palm Coast Little League's plan for reopening is setting the template for the rest of the groups, and we are very thankful for this partnership that we have. And that's all I had, Mayor.
Well, I just want to say to both representatives to Palm Coast Little League who are listening, I really want to thank you really for taking the time to present such a sound and solid and safe plan for reopening. You know, you often think about these types of strategies, and I know our residents have been extraordinarily patient through this entire time period. However, you know, I remember growing up and playing softball and soccer and my, you know, grandparents were on the sidelines and my parents, you know, were there and family members. And so it's not just about the kids. A lot of logistics goes into this reopening strategy. And I know Lauren and her team put forth an effort to organize and collaborate with the Sports Alliance team members that do participate in a lot of, you know, group activities within our amenities. And so, you know, having that conversation with them early on and them being prepared and thoughtful throughout this, not only to keep the kids safe, the, the families safe, but really the grandparents safe, who we know continue to be falling into the very high-risk category for COVID-19. So I am very excited about this moment for our community, for the families, and I want to say thank you to Palm Coast Little League for really setting the standard for which other organizations are now going to be required to fall into for our safety reopening plan. Job well done. I wouldn't have expected anything other. I know your commitment is strong to our city, but it really demonstrates the fact of, of the strong partnership we have. So I'm very proud of this moment. And if you can hear me and if you're watching, just share that message with the rest of your board members and your team members and look forward to seeing you out there. Are there any questions, Council?
I just want to add, just want to add that Little League is part of education, because sports are education, especially at this level. So therefore, keep up the good work, guys, and let's make sure that we're going to do it for the next 125 years, at least while I'm here.
Vice Mayor Clufus?
Yes, thank you. First, Lauren, thank you very much. Awesome presentation. I have two questions. One, whether or not we have any additional insight onto whether the World Series of, I'm sorry, the Little League World Series would continue, probably not as planned, on whether they had an augmented schedule. And then number two is if we can still talk about prioritizing upgrades to a sound system at the Indian Trail Sports Complex so that we're prepared to be equipped with proper audio. I know at opening day now, a couple of years in a row, we've had some difficulties. So if we can just keep those two things in the priority of our forefront of thinking, I agree with everyone else that it's a tremendously awesome program for Palm Coast.
And, and Vice Mayor Clufus, it is my understanding that the audio has been repaired. It was a glitch on opening day due to the construction process, but it is my understanding that those have been repaired.
Very good. Okay.
And the Wi-Fi, Lauren, I know that we in, in the past have talked about providing Wi-Fi in their training facility. Has that been completed or discussed or moved forward?
We do have a quote from Donella to complete the phase into their building. I can bring it up to Mr. Morton's approval for budgetary matters and to be included in the budget.
Is that a, do I have a consensus for the council to, to move that forward? They've been asking for it for quite a long time.
I concur.
It's fine, but I mean...
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Yeah, I concur.
All right, Matt, so put that in the budget.
Thank you very much for the direction.
Any other questions or comments, council members? Any member of the public wish to make public comment? Okay, thank you. I'll ask for a motion to approve this resolution.
I'll gladly make that motion.
There a second? Councilmember Cuff, second?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Clufus?
Aye.
Councilmember Brancino?
Yes.
Councilmember Cuff?
Yes.
Councilmember Howell?
Yes.
Mayor Holland?
Yes.
Mayor, this motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. Job well done. Thank you, Lauren.
Very good.
Agenda item number five is a resolution approving the selection of Brown &amp; Brown of Florida Incorporated as the agent of record for employee benefit services.
Thank you again, Honorable Mayor, City Council. It's my pleasure first to introduce to you, I think formally for the first time, Ms. Renina Fuller. Renina is our new human resources director, and I will say, in the short time she's been here, her experience and professionalism and her deep knowledge of municipal human resources is already making a positive impact in the city. So very grateful that we have Renina here. Thank you very much. So before us tonight, pursuant to the State of Florida insurance regulations, it requires that group health insurance be negotiated by a bound and duly licensed agent. We did issue a request for statement of qualifications for employee benefit broker services back in May. This is, as our current arrangement, is a flat-for-fee service rate. As you know and will recall, we do provide employee benefit programs, including health, dental, disability, and life insurance, and we do have a self-funded program. But I was hoping, Renina, that you could introduce and discuss this item and be available for any questions.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council. It's such a pleasure to be here. As City Manager just had stated, we had gone out for the statement of qualifications for employee benefits broker services. We had four responses, and based on the evaluation to the committee, the staff recommends approval of this three-year contract with Brown &amp; Brown to be our agent of record for the benefit services. It does have an option for two one-year renewals. And their costs did not increase this year. Actually, it stayed the same as it is currently. That's all I have.
Council, any questions about this particular agenda item?
Just to welcome you aboard, Renina, and listen, make us proud.
Thank you.
Seeing none, just to echo Councilmember Branquino's comments, welcome aboard. Looking forward to actually meeting you in person, since this has all been virtual. And, you know, welcome to the City of Palm Coast. So I will open up to the public. For any member of the public wish to make public comment on agenda item number five, please do so at this time. I will close public comment and take it back to this Council and entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
There are second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Clufus?
Yes.
Councilmember Branquino?
Yes.
Councilmember Cuff?
Yes.
Councilmember Howell?
Yes.
Mayor Holland?
Yes.
Mayor, this motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. Agenda item number six is a resolution approving a contract with Wastewater Solutions for Wastewater Treatment Plant One vertical turbine pump replacement.
Thank you again, Honorable Mayor, City Council, and tonight we have Alexander Blake, our utility engineer, to present this item.
Hey, folks. How you doing? Hopefully, the Council and mayor's doing well tonight. I have a pop-up screen. I'm trying to navigate here. Just give me a second. There we go. All right, we're good. Yeah, this item is the purchase of pump to replace an old existing pump at Wastewater Treatment Plant One. It's a critical component to distributing reclaimed water from that plant into the distribution system, primarily to the Hammid Dunes, which is one of the older customers of reclaim for the city. So to meet those obligations, that pump definitely needs to be upgraded. It's not flowing like it needs to. It's about probably 10 years past its service life, so it's actually been a very good pump. But we went through a selection process with it to look at efficiency, capacity, cost, and the amalgamation of all those things, take into consideration, create what we consider a total cost of ownership, which is just a way to compare all the pumps against each other and make the best selection and not just take the lowest price. But as it turns out, the lowest-priced pump was the best total cost of ownership rated, so that's where we had it. And is there any questions?
Council, any questions at this time?
Nope.
Vice Mayor Clufus?
Hey, Alex, I just had a quick question. When I was looking at the, at the bid sheet, there's different prices, I think. I wasn't sure how to, how to read the, the bid sheet. There was like a price in parentheses. Am I looking, thinking about the correct item? Hang on one second. I got lost on my... Or is that the following item? I'm sorry, I think that's the following item. I'm sorry, Alex.
Okay. Well, there, there were, there were a couple of different costs that you'll see with each of those items, on that pump, on each of those pumps. And one is the actual cost to do the purchase, and the other is the total cost of ownership, which basically evaluates how the pumps stack against each other. And it would be based on, so, so for example, you could have a lower-cost pump, but it might not have the flow characteristics or corrosion resistance, so it would rate it a little bit lower, you know what I'm saying? So that, that's how we factored in it. It just so turns out that the, the lowest base price was the best total cost of ownership, and the purchase is based on the base price of purchase.
Understood, and, and I did find the scoring sheet that I was looking at. Now I understand. Thank you. So the base pump is 44K, and then it's $11,000 of ownership. I, I appreciate your, I didn't understand why there are two different numbers there. So thank you for explaining that.
Yes, sir.
Does that conclude your questions, Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, Councilmembers? Seeing none, I'll open up to the public. Any member of the public wish to make public comment on agenda item number six, please do so at this time. Okay, thank you. I will close public comment. Take it back to this Council and entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
Make the motion to approve the resolution? Okay.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, well, roll call, please. I'm never getting used to this moment.
Vice Mayor Clufus?
Aye.
Councilmember Branquino?
Aye.
Councilmember Cuff?
Yes.
Councilmember Howell?
Yes.
Mayor Holland?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. I feel like this is a show of Hollywood Squares. I mean, it's like, seeing everybody lined up. Okay. Anyway, moving on to agenda item number seven is a resolution approving a master service agreement with T, sorry, my eyes, TFR Enterprises, DRC Emergency Services LLC for disaster debris removal and disposal services.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, City Council. This is for the selection of two firms, the two lowest-priced responsive bidders for emergency removal of debris for hurricane season, which is officially upon us. We do this every year to get prepared as part of our contingency in case we do have a storm and have to remove debris. We do have Public Works Director Matt Mansell here tonight, if there are any questions or concerns about this resolution.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the Council. So as Mr. Morton stated, in preparation for hurricane season, as you know, perhaps a storm would come through, we would have a requirement to remove large amounts of debris as we have had to do in the past. So in preparation for that, we went out to bid for disaster debris removal services, and this resolution would approve a master service agreement with two, two of the stated companies for those services. So we did, with the solicitation, receive 10 responsive and responsible bidders, and we reviewed those not only for price, but also with past performance, knowledge in the, in the stated requirements, you know, the equipment on hand, and their ability to take on the, the work as stated in, in the solicitation. And with that, if you have any questions, I would be happy to...
I have a couple of questions. They, they are recognized as a FEMA vendor.
Yes, ma'am.
So they're, they're recognized being FEMA contractor. So when, are they familiar with, and they, they have a good background in documentation, and are they part of that, or they just contracted to do the debris removal? Is any part of the contract stipulate that they must also quantify the amount they're picking up in order for us to get those dollars reimbursed?
Absolutely. So they are required to follow the FEMA guidelines, and they are both very experienced in that, as well as liaising with our contractors that we have on tap for disaster debris, excuse me, for, for the tracking of the disaster debris removal services as well.
And then the second question I have is, you know, we have a very large community within our community called Grand Haven. It's a gated community that has its own governing body, CDD, HOA, and during the last three hurricanes, they've had some significant tree down, you know, damage, those sorts of things. And I know that our first responders in those types of events have to have clear access quickly. Now FEMA doesn't allow us to tap into reimbursable dollars in private gated communities, private roads, if you will. I've been told that Grand Haven is indeed public roads, but, you know, that's here nor there. They, they maintain their own roads. So I wanted to see if there are any plans or discussions or coordination. I know that they have a contractor locally. I think it's four Cs that they contract with as a recognized bidder or vendor that they've contracted to do their debris removal. And I think what we've done historically, because this is a very competitive environment, when storms happen throughout the state of Florida, every city in the state, 412 and 67 counties, are all trying to get these contractors in quickly in order to clear their roadways and, you know, have it cleared for emergency first response, as well as our residents. And oftentimes, these contractors have gone to larger communities first, where they know they're going to get paid more because there's larger consumption of, of debris. And so I just wanted to make sure, historically, we've offset that by having Grand Haven maintain and take care of their debris removal, and we have Waste Pro that have also come in with garbage pickup. And so I just want to see how that is coordinated and worked to make sure we're still having those ongoing conversations with Grand Haven and, and maybe other communities. I'm not sure. It could be Tidlins, it could be Canopy Walk, it could be The Sanctuary, other gated communities inside of our city, that historically, that's been a challenge, in particular, when it's debris cleanup following storms, where we're sort of limited and we want to make sure that the dollars we are allocating and for are prioritized in a way where those are reimbursable dollars, that they will, we will be able to get those back, put those back into our emergency management fund to replenish that fund and make that whole, and not put such an additional burden upon our residents as we're going through these events. So are we familiar with that history, or...
Madam Mayor, I'm not familiar with that history, but I will make sure that we reach out and, and make those connections right away. We also have, in the near future, meetings set up with both of these firms to discuss operations before an emergency happens, and I will ensure that that is one of the agenda items that we discuss.
Yeah, maybe Helena can answer this question. Is that still the ruling from FEMA, that the private roads in gated communities are not reimbursable dollars?
That is correct. That has not changed. They did come back on Matthew after the event, I want to say about 18 months later, and because the pressure that they had received from the different communities, and they did allow for a small portion of Matthew to be reimbursable, but that has not changed.
So it is interesting, again, going back to Grand Haven, because I mean, that, that is a 4, 4,200 residents that, you know, it's a big, large population within our population. But it's, it would be interesting, because their argument has always been, or their point of contention is, although they maintain those roads, they still are considered somewhat public. I'm not sure what the exact ruling is on that. I don't know if someone can figure that out and let me know, but I, I do think that consistent coordination, I would also say, since we have our chief on here, I know that historically we've had Dr. Davidson, who represents, who is president of the CDD, has reached out because they're doing their own ham radio tower and response react team, and they're doing the training. They've had some issues historically with very little communication. When storms hit our community, they have to be able to communicate with their residents within their community. And so, Chief, I just want to make sure as well, I know Jason DiLorenzo has been over there to coordinate, so if we can get Public Works, and then Chief, if you want to comment on that.
I actually did, yes. To begin, I'd like to work with Matt Mansell on, on establishing the relationships for what needs to take place for working in some of these subdivisions and communities that, that are considered a gated community or off, off of our scope. During the, the first storm that went through Matthew, it wasn't that the fact that Grand Haven was overlooked or we didn't address it, it was the fact that the plan that was in place was rapidly overwhelmed by the, the disaster, and the people that actually were supposed to come in and help them with their work weren't available, and they were over, overstretched and couldn't handle the call volume. They were, they were expected to be in other places, and at the same time, and when you get a regional disaster like we did, they become overstretched and they can't perform according to what their contract says. That doesn't sit well with the residents, nor does it sit well with us when you've got folks that aren't getting serviced. And, and we will be judged on how we recover from an incident, not so much the disaster itself, but if, if we don't do our due diligence to help them in a certain way, that, that's a failure on everybody's part. I, I remember there were several meetings that took place, and, and at that point, the city manager that, then decided just bring in Waste Pro, have them start picking up a bulk of the material so that the, they can at least have access to their driveways and their sidewalks. The bigger stuff, that was something that was looked at as, as a more contractor-related removal that Waste Pro couldn't handle. I'd be happy to work with Matt on, on bridging those gaps and finding out what needs to be done, but at the end of the day, if it's a question of, is it reimbursable, or are we going to leave debris on the floor? Both the, the public safety aspect, we need to pick the material up off the floor and, and get it out of the streets so we have access for our ambulances and fire trucks and police cars. And then it's also a better living conditions for the people once we get into those areas. I will also add that we also have to prioritize on how, how difficult it is to get into certain areas, and we might have areas that are more affected with downed trees and, and blockages that we might not be able to get to them immediately, but they will be addressed in a certain prioritized order.
Thank you. And Matt, I know that's a lot to, to take in, but if you could make sure you're coordinating that...
Absolutely, yeah. We started some of that with the IAP last year and trying to coordinate our responsibility with Grand Haven. We haven't lost sight of the fact that we're still trying to push issues forward with FPL, with Waste Pro, with Environmental Land Services. And to the chief's point, we also had requests from Waste Pro to do a better job. As you remember, as a city, Dorian was very light, but we still had issues in the timeliness and how we coordinated that debris pickup from residents' yards. So we'll absolutely coordinate and, and be on top of that moving forward.
Thank you. Council, any questions?
Just that, like the chief and Matthew, Mansell said, that we need to take, we need to know what's going to take place, like, bridge those gaps that we have right now. This is, actually, we need to do this, but let's say that this, we adopt this resolution today, and the people don't want to do what we're going to ask them to. Are we binded to the point that we can't do anything else? And that's, that's what I'm asking, because apparently there's things that have, need to be taken care of. And if we're going to adopt this resolution without taking care of that, are we binded? I don't know if we should ask this question to our lawyer, but are we binded? I know this is, this is time sensitive.
Well, I think this such selects the vendor for, so a competitive bid went out for the vendor themselves, and because we're under FEMA requirements, we have to select a FEMA-recognized vendor as one of the areas. So this does nothing more, I believe, than selecting the vendor, correct?
Correct. This selects two vendors and establishes that contractual ability for us to use them in an incident.
That answered my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Cuff?
Yeah, I, I just was looking at the selection criteria, and did we have any ability, or did we make any attempt to find out whether the two companies we're talking about selecting were companies that basically sold out their smaller-city contracts to go to the bigger cities and the bigger bucks?
That's a great question.
First. I know that was a... I know that was a problem in past storms. I would hope that these folks have a good track record of not doing that if we have an agreement with them.
Correct. So that wasn't specifically one of the criteria, however, their past performance as well as, you know, feedback from other cities was provided and looked into as part of the criteria. We also looked at their capability to mobilize, how quickly they can mobilize, and what organic equipment they have on hand versus subcontracting that work out to other areas. So I'm very confident that the two companies that we chose are responsive, have a good track record, and do a lot of the work themselves.
Yeah. As long as somebody else doesn't offer more money when it really starts getting tough.
That's true.
Yeah. Okay. That's the only question I have.
Thank you. Anything else? I'll open it up to the public. Any member of the public wish to make public comment on Agenda Item Number Seven? Please do so at this time. Thank you. I'll close public comment. I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please, Virginia.
Counsel, sorry, Vice Mayor Clufus?
Aye.
Counsel member Branquino?
Yes.
Counsel member Cuff?
Yes.
Counsel member Howell?
Yes.
Mayor Holland?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. Agenda item number eight is a resolution approving a contract with Paul Culver Construction for construction services for the Palm Harbor Golf Clubhouse Improvements Project.
Thank you again, all mayor city council, an improvement project to the existing facility that has been planned and in the works for quite some time. And I will just ask Carl Cody to present the project and answer questions that council may have.
Good evening, the mayor and council, Carl Cody, speaking. This is for our Palm Harbor Golf Clubhouse. We have a structure there that was put in place when we renovated the course back in 2008. It is a structure that receives lots of use. It was a prefab unit, state certified, and was put into place as a temporary structure for the golf course. And it is in need of some updates and maintenance and repairs to the facility, part of it in which is replacing the plumbing fixtures in the restroom and the finishes, in both the men's and women's restroom, to provide an enclosure for the ice and water dispenser to protect it from the elements, and also deals with replacing the floor structure in the commercial kitchen area. And there's structural deficiencies and just over time, some failure that has to be taken care of. And there's also those managing improvements with changing that smell like fixtures and converting them over to LED to provide some overall energy savings on the project. This project was bid out. There were four bidders on the project. Low bidder was Paul Culver Construction. Bits came in right about our estimate that we had anticipated the cost to be, so we're looking for approval of the contract and the contingency to go into place to deal with any unforeseen conditions. This project, as it is under construction, the restrooms will be shut down, so it does take that into account, and we'll have some temporary restroom trailer. So what we're, it'll be more of a structure, CD compliant, and they're used for the public to use while those restrooms are being redone. The kitchen area will be closed after a period of time, so there'll be some inconvenience with that shutdown, but the only way that the work can be done is to remove all the equipment, take up the flooring and replace it.
Okay, counsel, any?
The work of this project.
Any questions or comments on this agenda item?
Just Carl, when do you think that this will start?
We're going to be getting with the contract just to verify some lead times and some of the materials. Our goal is to do it this summer during the slowest time of the year at the golf course, so there'll be the minimal impact.
Thank you.
Counsel member Howell?
Carl, what's the timeline to complete it, and how much does it cost?
I believe the timeline was 90 days for the overall project, and the cost is just under $185,000.
Okay. Matt, do we have any, this is for Matt Morton, do we have any problems with the funding for this because of what we've lost in incoming revenue?
We do not. This is accommodated for in the capital projects fund worksheet, and it's as much of a structural maintenance and making sure that we preserve our amenity. There are some structural floor issues and issues in the bathroom, so this is absolutely money that continues not just to modernize, but more importantly, protect this asset moving forward into future years before a more significant water damage or Joyce damage occurs on the floor.
Okay.
Does that conclude your questions, Mr., our counsel?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Got any? Okay. I will open up to the public. Any member of the public wish to make public comment on Agenda Item Number Eight? Please do so at this time. Anything else? I'll close public comment. Take it back to this council. Entertain a motion.
I will move to approve this motion.
I'll take it.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Clufus?
Aye.
Counsel member Branquino?
Aye.
Counsel member Cuff?
Yes.
Counsel member Howell?
Yes.
Mayor Holland?
Yes.
Mayor, this motion passes five to zero.
Right. Agenda item number nine is a resolution approving our city manager performance evaluation. Helena, I know you have been the collector of the forms that were sent out to each council member. Did you want to speak to the process at all before we begin the discussion, or comment or highlight any of the evaluation?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Helena Als, Financial Services Director. Yes, as requested by city council at the March 10 workshop, I worked with the city clerk and coordinated our city manager's evaluation. We're using a score of one through five, where one was poor, two needs improvement, three meets expectations, four exceeds expectations, and five excels. Mr. Morton's overall score averaged 3.73, or just above the midway between meets expectations and exceeds expectations. Now, the summary results were compiled using the criteria identified by council at the March workshop. There were four sections, and each section had components that were ranked by council. In your agenda package, you have the summary tabulation sheet along with the detailed tabulation sheet, and a copy of each council member's evaluation results. Now, the summary results were as follows. For Section One, assisting council with its policy-making role, criteria for providing information and providing advice, the overall score was 3.63. For Section Two, internal administration, which encompassed implementation of council policies, financial management, and personnel management, the overall score was 3.5. For Section Three, external relations, citizen relations, and intergovernmental relations, the overall score was 3.93. And for Section Four, personal accomplishments, including communications, management style, job effectiveness, the overall score was 3.86. Now, as I stated earlier, the average was 3.73. A little bit of background, for our current staff members, we had a 2% cost of living adjustment that was paid out in January. And we also have a merit type of package that averages about 3%. So based on the evaluation results, the city manager, if it was a regular employee, would be eligible for the 3% merit along with the 2% coda. That 5% increase would result in an additional $7,250 of salary increase as of the anniversary date of April 8, 2020. That concludes my summary. Thank you.
Thank you. So counsel, I just want to give each and every council member the opportunity to speak about our city manager's performance, your thoughts, any input you would like to provide in addition to this document, and then we will open up to the public for comment, and if Mr. Morton wishes to make any comments as well, I think that would be appropriate. So counsel, I'll start with council member Branquino.
Just, Matthew, it has been a pleasure. It's going to be a pleasure, and for as long as I'm here, I hope you're here, because you're doing a very decent job. When it comes to me personally, has yet to be one time that I go to you with any little thing that you didn't give me 100% of your attention, correct me when I was out of line, asking questions that shouldn't be, you didn't fear. And that's one thing I always asked when you were chosen, would you tell me what I want to hear, or you correct me if I have to be corrected? And you did it, and that's probably one of the most important things. Okay? So I think you're doing a very decent job, very, very decent job. To be honest with you, should have even be hired in this score, at least to me, was not much, much more, but at least more. And you're doing a very good job, and keep up the good work, and if anybody doesn't like it, better tell it to your face. Okay? Thank you.
Next, I will ask Vice Mayor Clufus.
Good evening. Yep, I continue to view this from a perspective as a city councilman that basically we are evaluating Mr. Morton every council meeting that we have, and if he continues to make two of these performance reviews, I don't suspect, and it would almost be a symptom of a council that wasn't working together, that we would bring up issues that we had with our city manager once a year as performance review. Matthew, I'm sorry, city manager Morton has always been available to me, and he continues to answer questions that I ask him directly. And like I said, I think this is a continually iterative process, and if each council member isn't giving him feedback in our weekly meetings, then I'm hopeful that they will start to do so, or we're doing ourselves a disservice. So I'm of the school of thought that this is more or less a checkbox, but it is a formal process, so I appreciate the process. But yeah, I'm satisfied with how Matthew has performed up to this point, and I continue to evaluate it every weekend. If we have any issues, I'm hopeful that we will discuss it as a council and not wait for a performance review to bring them up.
Thank you so much for your comments. Council member Howell?
I have enjoyed working with Matt. He's a friend, and I find that anything that I need information-wise, he's right there, and I have no reservations at all in working with him. He's a good man. We did the right thing by selecting you. That's it.
Thank you, council member Howell. Council member Cuff?
Well, one comment for this meeting is, he's been here a year, and I didn't realize his first name was Matthew. I thought it was Matt. But other than that, I would echo the comments of the other council members. I think it's been a very good first year with some significant challenges. I do think that being able to communicate one-on-one with the manager and get feedback from him and give him feedback is important as we go along, and I certainly hope that, you know, the leadership will continue to improve and the city will improve along with it.
Thank you. I will add my comments. You know, it's been an interesting year, to say the least. I think day three, Matt walked in, and I believe Hurricane Dorian had hit soon thereafter. You know, we activated our EOC, and he was put literally in the storm. And so it's been an interesting year to say that between a hurricane, you know, moving your family here, as well as now dealing with a global pandemic in the first time in 106 years, would underestimate or undervalue the moment of the first year of Matt Morton in the city of Palm Coast. I base my evaluation on a lot of things. You know, we have a diverse community, one that requires a tremendous amount of services that we provide to our city. We have a large employment base as well with a lot of different departments, and so coming in brand new and not having that institutional knowledge, I really found a lot of value in the fact that you did spend a lot of time with, you know, the directors that have been here for quite a while, as well as building a team that you felt could meet the expectations and follow up with the city council priorities and execute those accordingly. So I have found real value in our conversations. I think you bring forth a level of energy that I've not seen diminish. You know, we've had conversations in regards to finding that balance a bit more as far as working a tremendous amount, and I think we're getting there. I think between the emergency events, you know, being able to build a team that you feel could effectively manage and run departments, I think, you know, having that ability and giving you that ability to do that has been helpful. And I'm looking forward to having you have the ability to find a little bit more balance. And I think that would help in a lot of different areas moving forward, but I have been very impressed and continued to be impressed. Your knowledge and your understanding and your work ethic is extraordinarily strong. So I've appreciated your time here. I look forward, and I think the best is yet to come, and I think our community is going to benefit from your leadership.
Thank you. Thank you. So real quickly, I'll try to make it quick. I've appreciated the support that I've received and the leadership from you mayor, council. It's been tremendous, 14 months. Haven't regretted one moment coming back to my home state of Florida and the experience this has been, but I would be remiss to sit here and not be grateful for each and every member of the executive team who has made this possible. We have extraordinary people, as you know, and our citizens should know how extraordinary these folks are. They get up every day and make my job possible and make this city able to move. With that being said, there's a lot of change that has hit our community this year, and our community is challenged. We are challenged, and we're going to be challenged through COVID-19. We're going to be challenged through this next year in our revenues and our budgets. I have asked and issued orders and expected, beginning in this next fiscal year, that staff step up and share in that sacrifice with our community, and have eliminated cost of living adjustments and pay raises, also eliminated a lot of other, you know, those things that tie in that are going to help our budgets and help us do the right thing. So that being said, while I accept the evaluation and I'm grateful, I would also ask that council do not pass the ordinance. I would like to reject the offer of a pay raise while it is appreciated, and I appreciate that being in the documentation. I believe by, as we all have, and by watching your example, mayor and council, leading by example in this community is what we need. So with that, I would ask that you, that I do reject any offer of a pay raise tonight, but thank you for the feedback, and I also look forward to an extraordinary year coming up.
Thank you for that. I will open up to the public. Any member of the public wish to make public comment on Agenda Item Number Nine? Please do so at this time. Please state your name for the record, and your three minutes will begin.
My name is John Brady, and I want to inform you that the live thing on TV is about 20 seconds behind what's happening, so when you ask for a public comment, you're behind, you have to wait longer.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Next speaker. We will close public comment. So I do believe we probably need to just also adopt the resolution, perhaps leaving out the recommended pay raise, so that would be appropriate. Do I have a motion for that?
Yes, I'd happily make that motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Clufus?
Aye.
Counsel member Branquino?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Cuff?
Yes.
Councilmember Howell?
Yes.
Mayor Holland?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll now move to public participation. This is a time period for those that have not spoken at the beginning of the meeting. You have up to three minutes to state your name for the record. We ask that you call in now. Your call-in number is 386-223-1690. Okay, we'll close public comment. We'll now take it back to discussion by City Council of matters not on the agenda. I'm going to start with Councilmember Branquino, since he is in the council chambers.
All right, just once again, like I do every time, I want to thank every single one in the staff, every single one without exception, for the job they're doing, the patience they're actually showing throughout this ordeal. Keep up the good work, people. And now to Matthew. Matthew, I think two weeks ago, you caught this big fish. 28 inches was apparently a record, maybe. Sorry, but I think that was photoshopped. That's it.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Clufus?
Yes, thank you. I, I would second the fact that that was probably photoshopped, but that's neither here nor there. But I would like to give a shout out to the Palm Coast Fire Department, in addition to all of the other employees that I'm thankful to have on our staff. I, I met with our fire department leadership today, Kyle Berryhill, Chief Porte, and Brad was there as well. And they gave the, me a deep dive into what exactly the data is indicating for us going into the future, and how our, our expected population increases across our city and also our county are going to impact the fire services that we have available to those individuals, and also what our current level of services. And I was blown away by the data-driven approach and how critical they were of their own performances, and how honest they were with the feedback that they were giving me. It just totally blew me away, and I really reinforced how thankful I am to have such a tremendous group of individuals protecting us and, and serving us. I just wanted to let everyone know that I'm, I'm very appreciative of them, and I, and I wanted to say thank you to them in front of everyone, because they really did a great job of ensuring that I understood the fire safety in our city, where it's going, and how we got to where we are right now. So thank you again, and I was just, I'm very appreciative of that, and I feel tremendous that I can now say with confidence, the decisions that we're making are based on, you know, years of data, and they had something like 500 years of experience within the department. So these guys know what they're doing, and I just wanted to extend a public thank you to everyone in our fire department, everyone who's helping keep, keep us safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Cuff?
Just a, a quick kudo to our city manager. I think that's the first time I've ever seen somebody have a raise turned down by a five to zero vote and appear to be happy about it. But I commend you, Matt, for leading by example. And again, all the, you know, the employees that we have that are putting up with so much to keep the city working as smoothly as it has, and continue to work on the reopening. I know people are getting impatient, but it's still important that we do what is, do what is in the best interests of the public, as well as our employees, as we start getting things back to normal. So keep up the good work, and I hope we'll all be able to, we'll all be able to be there so that Eddie won't have a chance to hog the dais with the mayor and the city manager for the next, you know, two months. Wish I was there, but only with a mask.
Councilmember Howell?
Yeah, thanks. You know, Saturday, the world witnessed America going back into space for the first time, where we were able to launch from the Kennedy Space Center. And we are on the move. SpaceX has proven that commercialization of the program for space is workable. I certainly expect Boeing to be right next to them, and then of course, Mr. Bezos. Now, that being said, you know, one of my projects was to go out and solicit some aviation industries to seriously consider coming down here. And this just all kind of renewed itself because unfortunately, this nonsense with the moratorium on the Dollar General store has driven away a very good company who had between 250, 300 employees that they had given consideration to moving here. They were tired of working up in the north, and they wanted to take advantage of Henry Riddle and some of the other colleges in the area, the talent. And minimum salary for their employees was 60,000 a year to start. And they're not coming now because of the press that was released. And I have another company that is on the cusp, but they're not sure either. So we've got to clean this thing up and, and move forward, because, you know, I'm batting my head against the wall to try to bring in some clean, green corporations to offset our tax base. That's, that's all I have.
Okay. Yes, my comments, just want to reiterate, I want to thank everyone, you know, in our entire community to have remained patient with us. As everyone is aware, our, our governor had moved forward with additional phases of reopening. And, you know, we have been compliant with those reopening strategies as far as our business community goes, consistent with those strategies, and we want to remain consistent. So I'm, I'm encouraged by the conversations and the feedback I'm getting, not only from Tallahassee, but also locally. I think our residents have been very appreciative of our approach and continue to be. So thank you for everyone and everyone's involvement. You know, our teams that have worked remotely and virtually, I think have done an outstanding job without service disruption to any services. So that's pretty extraordinary when you're thinking about the times we've been through and continue to go through. Those have not stopped being an issue. So as many of you may know, I also issued a message of unity today in an effort to recognize what had occurred in recent events that have certainly changed the landscape around the country on how individuals are choosing to react to an incident. And so I think it's important in the next few days and upcoming weeks that we come together in this moment of solidarity and, and recognize not only the loss that occurred, but try to do that with a peaceful message. And so we have to continue to recognize the safety of our first responders. That has to be an issue that we do not ignore throughout these times, but one, we, we recognize our residents' need to express themselves. And so I wanted to read it here tonight to reiterate that in advance of some discussions that were taking place throughout the day on our social media, not our social media, but different social media platforms in regards to possible protests that were going on tomorrow and over the next few days. So I'm deeply saddened by the tragic events of the past few days regarding Minnesota's George Floyd. Everybody deserves to feel safe in this country. Everybody deserves to feel valued, and their voices need to be heard. No one single person should ever have to encounter the fears that so many people in our nation are facing daily. My heart is with each and every person who feels marginalized and persecuted. I believe in peaceful protest. It is a fundamental American right to be able to gather and to be heard in order to bring about positive, lasting change. It's devastating to see the hate and hurt that so many people are feeling as it plays out in other communities across the nation. We must actively come together in our hearts and in our souls to share our loving encouragement with our friends, speak with a compassionate voice, reach out and say, what can we do to help you and support you? As long as I have lived here, and as long as I have known so many of you, I've always stood tall with this community. As one people, I've always been proud that we are one Palm Coast. Our strength has always been and will always be our unity in trying times. We have more in common than we have differences. Together, I know that each and every one of us has the humanity and understanding to find common ground. Thank you. City Attorney, any comments this evening? Trying to unmute? Not unmuted yet, Bill. Got it?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
All that for nothing to add.
That's okay.
Sorry.
Discussion by City Manager matters, not on the agenda.
Nothing to add, thank you.
Okay. And everyone tune in to our virtual town hall tomorrow for continual COVID-19 updates. Look forward to continual public participation. A lot of good questions keep coming in, so thank you for tuning in and participating.
Motion to adjourn.